Make sure we focus the current one. I think that was a good chance to give you names.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, when you give this on a module, I remember nine years ago, boys. They were going through trucks, more than that, they do my gun. I remember nine years ago, boys. They were going through trucks, more than that, they do my gun.
Okay, but I'm not going to remember it. We went north instead of south.
Good evening. Thank you for coming to the regular meeting of the Canadian City Commission. Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's seven o'clock. Uh, we don't have any recommendations. Can you and I have talked about what can we escape in the next meeting? Um, will you join me in the federal allegiance?
Hallelujah. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Should we roll call, please?
Denison.
Here.
Whedon.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Money.
President.
Swam.
Here.
You have a court.
Thank you. Um, there are amendments to the agenda.
I'd like to amend the agenda that include item D, excuse Cameron Downey, uh, has an excused absence for the February fourteenth meeting.
Under consent agenda?
Please.
Is there support?
All support.
Does it have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Sean will make said motion.
Thank you. Is there support?
Yeah.
Is there money else for? Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Whedon.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Kears.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'd like to open a public hearing. The purpose of a public hearing is for the city commission to receive public comment regarding the submittal of Michigan Department of Natural Resources, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant application to fund the McCoy's Creek Trail Extension project.
Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public, Rich Murphy, Community Development Director, I just want to explain what this is. Uh, this is a public hearing of for a funding piece for the McCoy's Creek Trail Extension. We know you guys are aware, but hopefully the public's been following the positive momentum we've had in securing grant awards. Uh, most recently, a three hundred and forty thousand dollar grant award from Nats and MDOT. Additionally, through the work of Jerry Flinner and our team, actually Jerry Flinner and Suzanne, Susannah DeNo, uh, part of our team are here this evening. And Jerry's been able to raise about approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, which includes a gracious piece from our local power company. So we, uh, we had a lot of energy and momentum. This is the last piece. The, uh, in order to apply for Michigan, uh, DNR Natural Resources Trust Fund grant, it to be eligible, you must have a public hearing. That's what we're doing tonight. So, uh, public's invited to, uh, speak regarding the project. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to, uh, answer them. Later, uh, under committee development, you have an action item, which would be a resolution for us to proceed with the application and the matching, uh, affirmation of the matching piece of the grant.
Thank you. So we can make a motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Henry.
I will open the public hearing regarding the MDNR MNT grant application for McCoy Creek Trail Expansion Project in Canton.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money. I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Downey.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Kears.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to make a, a public comment regarding, um, this grant for the trail extension, please make your way to the podium. State your name for the minutes.
I'm not quite, no, I'm not. There's three zero four North Door. I noticed that, um, ten B golf cart use in the city. If there's anything printed, I would like a copy.
Okay, but at this time, we're, we're trying to take public comments specifically for the trail extension.
Oh, all right.
Just the trail.
But we're just talking about the trail extension unless you're, unless that's what you want to talk about.
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay.
For everybody. Oh, excuse me.
You're right.
I note that although I applied for the Michigan Main Street Board of Directors, I was not recommended for the board by the Buchanan Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. This despite my participation in Buchanan land use planning since originally going to Buchanan Plan Commission in nineteen sixty-one.
Mr. Henry.
And my participation in historic preservation.
Henry.
Yeah?
This, this hearing at this moment is about the trail extension and, and the grant that we got for the trail extension? And, and we can just wait until this hearing's over, then I'll?
Okay, I, I thought, I thought we were on the comments on the.
No, I'm sorry. This is for the.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Well, I get a chance to say the first part of it twice.
Do you need to do some practice?
Don't go far. I'm just hanging out there.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think there's a lot of public comment for the, the trail, so. Uh, anyone wishing to make a comment regarding the, uh, trail extension? Mr. Murphy?
I would just invite Jerry or Susannah to, to make a comment if they wish, uh, or not. Um, I, I would also just, uh, for informational purposes, we're, we're going to request three hundred thousand dollars, which is the maximum amount. And the trail extension, um, roughly described goes from the existing trail head at EB Carp Woods down Shermer Parkway, over Walton Bridge, and into a trailhead beside River St. John.
And then you just.
Uh, I would just really like to recognize this amazing team, though. Um, we've been working on this for several months, almost a year maybe, uh, totally. I can't say enough about Jerry and Susannah and, uh, Brian and, um, Don and the other, we have about two, regular two-week calls. We have status inquiries. Uh, right now, we're about eighty percent, uh, finished with our application, which is a, uh, about a fifteen or sixteen section application with lots of, uh, required documents. We have over fifteen letters of support, uh, from anywhere from conservation groups to our, uh, state and federal delegation, uh, representatives, uh, and our elected officials, our chambers of commerce. Mr. Flinner has secured pledges from countless, uh, private entities and businesses. This is just a project that everybody loves and everybody is behind, and so we feel, I think, just cautiously optimistic that we're putting our best foot forward for this National Resources Trust Fund grant. And, uh, the applications due at the end of the month, uh, April first, and then we'll hope to have an update, uh, when they come up, when they approve the projects.
Great.
No, except for thanks for having me. And if you do end up having any questions, you can feel, reach out to Rich and he can reach out to me. We can get it answered. But thank you again for your time tonight. I really appreciate your support and helping us get this done, too.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to throw that back at Rich. Between Rich, Susannah, and the city staff, the city staff has done an excellent job assisting us in tracking the money. Making sure that, uh, everything we got pledges on is coming in as it should be. And it's been a great partnership between the trail and the city and, uh, Susannah and the group. So just thank you very much.
Can I have your names?
Can you have my name? Jerry.
And your address?
One, two, four, eight, five, Rogers.
Thank you, sir.
Can you just stand right there for a second? I just want to thank you publicly while you're standing in front of everyone. When do you like it or not? You're the face of that trail extension and you've done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to make a public comment regarding the trail extension, right? Okay.
If he could just quit bringing me these lists of everything that I gotta do for his trail.
Somebody's gotta do it. Wait till all the garbage cans go.
Going once, going twice, saying no one, I would like to close the public hearing. This is money I would move to close the public hearing. Thank you. Is there support? No support. Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Money.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Kears.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to make a public comment, please make their way to the podium. State your name for the minutes.
As I said before, I note that although I applied for the Michigan Main Street Board of Directors, I was not recommended for the board by the Buchanan Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. This despite my participation in Buchanan land use planning since originally going on in Buchanan Plan Commission in nineteen sixty-one. And my participation in history, historic preservation since before going on the original Board of Directors of the Buchanan Preservation Society in nineteen eighty-one. Further, this appears to be a blatant discrimination, a blatant age discrimination in violation of Michigan law. Whether I sue the city of Buchanan is up to me. Also, Buchanan Preservation Society is not represented among the recommended members of a main, Michigan Main Street Board, despite the fact that the Main Street program is a program of a national trust for his historic preservation. And the fact of a historic character of the Buchanan Business District. I believe some adjustment is needed here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Henry. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment on the agenda item? Right forward. State your name for the minutes.
I already did it. Now see if you're listening or not.
You want something to write in about?
You are, yes, driving a golf cart in Buchanan. If it's ridden, I would like to see it. If it is not, I would like to know when it will be.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the consent agenda. And the motion to approve the, the amended consent agenda.
I will do approve the consent agenda as presented, including paying the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two bill run in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and three cents.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support the amended agenda.
Can we roll call, please?
Swam.
Yes.
Denison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Kears.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten, schedule managed from the floor, part of Newhoff, update on downtown reconstruction and wellhouse and treatment facility projects.
Thank you, Mayor Denison, Commissioners. Uh, my name's Mike Schwartz from part of Newhoff, and I may give you hopefully a brief update of where you are with your USDA project. Uh, back September was the last time we were here, and my coworker just, or Jason, uh, gave a presentation on a lot of information that was probably a little overwhelming with maps and data and all sorts of information. So, but this is, uh, your infrastructure is not just a local problem. It's a national problem. Um, so I'd like to commend you for taking forth and being proactive on your infrastructure and resolving these health and safety concerns. Um, so I just want to talk a little bit about what this generally means, um, to kind of bring this back together, a little bit on nomenclature. Uh, there's two basic projects that are being, uh, designed as we speak right now. One is we call the downtown infrastructure project, which includes the water, the sewer, the storm, uh, the streets, along with the street light and oak in front, and then replacement of your downtown Latin galvanized services. Um, and then there's also this wellhouse and treatment facility. And so I'm not sure if you can quite see this map, but this map was even at your last meeting. Uh, but basically your downtown infrastructure is Third Street, Oak Street, Main Street, Red Bud, um, kind of the, really the downtown core, and hence is why we're looking at the streetscape associated with that project. And then the other project is out at the, um, DPW site. Um, so that's where you have a current water treatment system, uh, that will be expanded to, uh, do some further treatment. And then a new well that will be going out, um, to the southwest section of your town. Um, to date, um, after your last meeting, they, uh, you guys closed on your notice of intent to, uh, close on the two loans. You locked in your interest rates with USDA. We met with USDA to give us the checklist of all the items that need to be completed to actually close on that loan. And then there was a, um, we've actually transitioned from that whole loan closing and right into design of the project as we speak right now. Um, so what's happening in the next step is, like I just mentioned, uh, USDA has this thirty-nine item checklist. It covers everything from, um, right-of-way certification, rate studies, so you know what your rates will be, um, all the way through bidding the project, bid tabs, uh, specifications. So, uh, we're actually in that process right now with the, uh, city staff to complete those, um, items through the checklist. For the downtown infrastructure project, uh, lots has been going on. You've probably seen our survey crews out here for several months, picking out the underground, verifying the right-of-way information, uh, picking up the topographic surveys. Um, so we've had streetscape meetings with your staff. Um, we're actually meeting every four weeks, uh, discussing different topics out there. Um, and then we are actually working on the title work right now to make sure all your right-of-way certifications are all in place to actually close on the loan. Coming up, you'll next start seeing a couple of drill rigs out here to do, uh, geotechnical, uh, to confirm water levels, soils, um, confirm of the contaminations, if any, out here that we've been reviewing. Finished working up on the streetscape design, um, what that will look like. Uh, Rich has been helping put together the committee for that information and, uh, then we'll be able to incorporate that into the design. Uh, we're looking at actually having the construction begin in twenty twenty-three, so it will be a big project. Um, if, I don't want to say it'll be an easygoing, I'll just, I might just say it's going to suck sometimes downtown. I mean, it's going to be disruptive. Um, I'll just say that now. So I think the whole key to this is, uh, communications, uh, with the public, um, as we work on traffic access management plans and such like that, and being open and, um, upfront with the public as the project goes forward. Uh, the downtown or the, um, the well and treatment building, um, that is actually moving right along, too. We've actually done some water sampling to make sure the compatibility of a new well, et cetera of that. Uh, we, uh, have been working with your, uh, project manager, um, to develop as the DPW project, you obviously know what's going on, too. So, um, as that comes down and the landscaping and the orientation and layouts of that, make sure that all ties seamlessly with our design, the elevations, everything just will fit together on there. Um, so at this point, we are working with Eagle to make sure that, uh, they're all on board with works going on, meeting with staff to confirm final locations, working with manufacturers on, uh, type of products for the, uh, treatment, for the water treatment plant. Um, and as we pull this all together, we'll put the plans and specifications for permitting and actually put this out for bid. So I know I just covered a thousand things, and I know we have a long meeting, but, um, is there any, uh, questions you would like to ask at this point that I may be able to answer?
Can you back up to the slides on specifically which streets are?
Sure.
Part of this and then?
Sure.
So what streets and then on the, when you get to the well slide, where's the location of that well, just as a refresher?
So if you can picture this, if you, this is your DPW site.
Yeah.
And then there's the park and ball fields in here.
Okay.
There's actually a trailway that comes down along and then along the railroad.
Yeah.
Um, if you keep going on that, it actually opens up and you actually have one of your wells sit back there. It kind of turns to the north.
Yeah.
Uh, the new well is expected to be probably about a hundred foot, probably east of that. Um, but right in that same region, um, is where that proposed well is slated.
All right. And then which roads are specifically?
So that's a great question, but basically it'll be a front, street, Red Bud, uh, part of Third, Main Street, Oak Street, Duty Street, and then Third Street and out to the waste treatment plant.
And this is done in phases. I want to make sure that that's.
So, so this will be anticipated to be done in two phases. So, and when I call phases, um, I'm referring to twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Uh, the whole project will be all designed and bid as one big package, um, but it will be slated to which sections we want done in twenty twenty-three and which sections we want done in twenty twenty-four. Uh, mostly to make sure that there's, we didn't like put like ninety percent of the work in twenty twenty-three and there's just not physically enough time and to do that. So it'll be a balancing act, also with the streetscaping, um, to make sure that we have a good stopping point come, you know, when construction season ends in October, November, we're not stuck with unpaved roads, et cetera of that nature.
And then just to be clear for the public, can you explain, um, why the roads that are chosen were chosen and, and kind of, you know, the age of the pipes that we found during the SAW grant?
Absolutely. So, um, basically there was, that was kind of the last September meeting, but just for an update on the public. Um, basically your system dates back to the twenties on the storm, the thirties on the water, the thirties on the sanitary. Uh, basically the useful life is generally seventy to a hundred years. You can pretty much do the math and everything is old. Really, the reason this area was picked was, one, this is pretty much your oldest section of the downtown. Uh, when we did the evaluation under the SAW grant, um, that was when we actually did the condition assessments, the videotapes, and this was determined the worst conditions of all the stuff, which kind of lined up with what we would typically expect. Um, and then this also laid out, um, in the long-term plan, there was actually about twenty projects proposed. This is about six of them. But this is kind of the, we'll call it the backbone of this whole future thing. So from here on out, it's kind of like a spider web. We can do this street or that street, but it kind of forms the downtown backbone that everything spurs off of. So the sanitary was the primary driving force, starting at the treatment plant, moving it through the main interceptor through downtown, and then set up the core for all future projects when timing and funding becomes available.
Excellent. Thank you.
When we redid the fourth street intersection a couple of years ago, did we do that work underneath ahead of time?
Yes, so the, uh, DPW contacted us to just confirm that the sizes were appropriate and such like that. So they took that upon themselves.
So what, what is the time like for each, each phase? How long is downtown gonna be a mess?
You want to throw this?
Sure.
All right. I'll let Jason comment on this one.
Yeah, so I think we talked a little bit about it last time. We're in, right in the middle of, actually, we're at the tail end of our very similar project in Dixburg. I mean, every community is a little bit different, but we're right at the tail end of that one. So, um, one of the things that we have to balance as engineers and looking out for your best interests is giving the contractor enough time to do the work, um, so that you can get your best price, right? So there's going to be a lot of things that we have to balance. Uh, the downtown is going to be, uh, a mess for a while. Uh, we have some choices that we can work with staff to either, um, close the downtown entirely and shrink that construction timeframe down without any access. Or we can lengthen the construction timeframe out and kind of try to keep it semi-open. So there's lots of things like that that we have to work through, and obviously gravity flows one direction, so we have to keep that in mind as we lay out the design plans. Back to the funding a little bit, it kind of ties into the answer is that, um, before we can close on the loan for road development, we have to have all of those projects bid. So that's why we actually, um, tailored this project back or trimmed it back a little bit. It was at one time even bigger than this. Uh, we just felt like we couldn't bid out that much work at one time and get good bids, you know, have enough contractors that were capable of that much work. Um, so our, our hope would be that we could bid this out in a time that we could maybe start some work next fall in twenty-three. The majority of the work's going to happen in twenty-four, and, I mean, once we get there, we might know that we even have to extend it a little farther. But we want to give contractors a fair chance to get the work done, and this is a really big bite of the apple, so that's one of the things that we're trying to balance. And we also have a couple of the grants that are going to provide some scheduling issues, too. There's a couple of grants through MDOT that we're getting, uh, for some of the roadwork and signal work. So we're lots of balls in the air trying to juggle them all at the same time.
How, how will you handle like a building downtown that only has a front entrance?
Yeah, so what we do is we did, we, we set up different provisions in the contract with your contractor to make sure that, uh, we provide access at all times. Uh, now clearly, when the concrete sidewalk is replaced right in front of their door, if that's their only door, only entry point, um, there's going to be a period of time where you can't get in there, right? So you schedule that for, uh, a Saturday or something like that, or a Sunday. Um, so there's little things like that that we can do. Um, my experience is a lot of those buildings have a rear entry, too, but, you know, maybe it's not intended for the public to, to enter. it's not intended for the public to enter through rear. So we have to work through all those details.
I think one, that all gets a bribe.
Okay.
Maybe you guys need to install an elevator in the back.
So a lot of that work will be done by the committee, I imagine, as you're working with them?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's honestly, that's the number-one thing for us right now, is to work with Rich and the team that's put together for that, and to zero in on what that's gonna look like. Because we're, I mean, that's a lot of work to design, and we've got to make sure that we're hitting certain milestones so that we can achieve those bid dates, so that we can make sure we can use all the other grants that we have available to us.
Great. Is there a question? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike Summers, who wants to propose use of golf carts in the city of Buchanan?
I'm here to give you my name. I give my name and address and all the good stuff?
Yes.
Mike Summers, 207 West Front Street. And I'd like to piggyback off that, you know, while the roads are down, what's the perfect time to use a golf cart, right? So I don't know if you guys have a list of this, but I have a list of some good reasons why I think it would be a good idea. Then I also have a list of the cities that have already approved it in Michigan, and I know that if a city is thirty thousand or less, you know, it's legal to drive them on there, but it's up to you guys to approve it. But did you want me to go over all this stuff, or? Yeah, okay. So, you know, I feel that this would bring, like, that campground feeling to our community, encourage, like, old-fashioned communication, like, social interaction, allow elderly to, like, move around the town a little bit more, attend more activities, more attendance to music festivals and other planned events, free parking for out-of-town, like, when out-of-town business, or out-of-towners come in and they're parking up downtown, we can use our golf carts to, you know, maybe park down at the library or whatever. More sales at the farmers' markets, people will be able to load their carts up versus carrying two bags up Front Street. Allow tours for residents, like, new residents coming into town, take them through, show them what Buchanan has to offer. Lower emissions if we want the battery-operated ones, or not operated, but battery golf carts. Reduce the speed, cut down traffic noise, more affordable way for some people to get around town, and slows down, like, the pace of living, put smiles on faces, and join, we already have forty-eight cities in Michigan that have approved it, so let's join it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I got some questions for Mike.
Oh, you do? All right.
Right. So if we were to propose this, what are some rules that you think we should impose, such as, some things that came to mind to me when I was thinking about this was getting inspections by PD, getting a permit to make sure it passes the list, recognize the rules, and move on. But when you did all this research, which we haven't done yet, what are some rules that other cities are doing that you think we should include in our ordinance?
Some cities are making it mandatory to put blinkers, or like a slow-moving sign on the back, kind of like you would the tractors, maybe turn signals. They have to be sixteen to operate them in some cities. I didn't do research on all of them, but just so everyone's safe. And then I think they have hours, so you can't have it, you can't be driving after a certain time or before a certain time, obviously, probably at night. But that's kind of all I've found on what the other cities have done.
Well, I would refer my question to the chief, and wondering if these, would these have to be street legal, like I said, as far as you'd need turn signals, possibly a windshield?
Yes.
Headlight-type apparatus?
So, let me speak from here. I mean, so, yes, there are some requirements, and like Mike said, Mike, first of all, appreciate you coming up here and bringing this to us and the commission. Some of the things, you know, is turn signals, headlights, reflectors. Yeah, you can't be on the road a half hour before sunrise and a half hour before sundown. So there are some requirements. So those are some of the things that we would have to do. And I know that you said that the PD would have to do inspections. None of my guys are certified in that to say that, hey, you know, these work and they don't. I'm not sure if the PD wants to take on doing inspections of golf carts. So there's a lot of things that we have to work through, who's going to do these, and how are we gonna make sure that these vehicles, you know, meet the state requirement to be on the road?
And that would be the only thing I think we would have to show concern is if they're street legal.
Sure.
I think it's, do you have any questions?
I wanted to ask, did you mention a minimum age?
Yeah, I think they said you have to have a driver's license, or some cities.
Sixteen.
Yeah.
You have to have a driver's license, so could be sixteen or older to operate on the road?
Well, I appreciate you bringing this, it's an interesting concept, and personally, to make a motion to keep your score in it.
Yeah, I'd move to authorize the city administration to further review the proposed use of golf carts in the city of Buchanan, with the goal of presenting further details at a future meeting for consideration by the commission.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
This is money, and I would support that.
Can we roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Carries?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, this time we're going to move to item eleven, reports by departments, committees, and boards, our community development director report by Mr. Rich Worthy.
Commissioners, just a couple of items. First, I have, there is action required on the resolution of support for local match for the DNR Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, as I explained, for the McCoy's Creek Trail Extension Project. And as I've explained, putting our strongest foot forward on this resolution, even though we believe we have the donations and the pledges coming in to cover the match, if the city could state in the resolution and kind of become the carrier for those funds so that we can submit this application, have it be as competitive as possible. If you are to approve this, we're gonna move very quickly to wrap up our submittal and probably submit within the next seven to ten days. So, other than that, I just wanted to brief you that I will be coming to you at your next meeting with a public hearing for two Oprah exemption certificates for the Stark School and the Hometown Video Building. And we will have a public hearing to be scheduled sometime in the next few days, and a packet to be prepared and sent for your review for that action that we'll ask for at your March 28th meeting, which is the approval of the exemption certificate for both of those projects.
Will there be any questions?
Sean, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-03/425 in support of the local match of the DNR, NNR, TAF grant for McCoy Creek's Trail Extension.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Carries?
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you, Rich. Okay, this time, Chamber Executive Director, Main Street Manager, Ashley Regal has a report.
Hello. In regards to the Main Street Board of Directors, we are so proud and grateful to announce that we have received an overwhelming response from our community in response to the call for the Michigan Main Street Board participation. Besides the numerous applications for board service, we've also had many individuals express their interest in volunteering, consulting, and serving on subcommittees. Buchanan is truly blessed with a wonderful and committed community, and I cannot wait to see how this program can give back to the community we all love. The Buchanan Area Chamber of Commerce had a difficult conversation narrowing down such an excellent group of applicants, but we are happy to present a group of citizens we think would serve Buchanan well due to their diversity and strengths, opinions, backgrounds, and interests. We now look to the commission for approval of our recommendation or to make suggestions for further review.
So will we make a motion?
I'd move to approve the recommendation that Buchanan Area Chamber of Commerce regarding board appointments to the City of Buchanan Main Street Executive Board with the following changes. I would like to include Jeff Griffin's name on that, if you don't mind.
Do you want to read the rest of the names? Can you read the rest of the names that are on that? Yeah, because they're above there.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Please.
Jeff Griffin's name would be included, along with Tracy Dippo, Jen Gary, Randy Hendrickson, Tony Hauser, April Janowski, Amanda Kelly, Uricky, pardon me if I'm wrong, McCarty, Liz Martin, Meg Paulette, John Shaver, Ann Tuitt, Kathy Virgil, and Mark Wheaton.
Thank you. Is there support?
Sean, I'll support. Yep. Just regarding...
Would anyone else like to make a motion? Who approves? I'm sorry, or support the motion?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Just want to make a comment first, if I could.
Yeah.
Especially since Mr. Ryan made a comment about it. So I'm on the Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to make sure it's in the record the amount of time that that board put into discussing every person that was selected for this committee. Every single person that applied has a significant amount of conversation as to why they're a great applicant, and all the attributes they have, and all the good things they could do for this board. With that said, not every single person can be on that board, and we have to recognize as the board grows, the harder it is to make a decision, right? But we did make sure that every single person was included so their voice could be heard, and outlined five different subcommittees so they could be involved because of how important this is, and we want to gain, we want to keep momentum with this. So I, although you might not have been chosen if you're not one of those fourteen, just know we still want to hear your voice, and you are important, and I want to thank the chamber for the amount of time. I mean, well over an hour that was spent on every name. That's it, all I want to say.
If I could add, we do keep the suggestions for board commission in our private packet for the subcommittees. So if you didn't see your name in there, it's probably because it's in the private packet.
Okay, you have a motion? We have a second. Can we roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Stay in board appointment.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Carries?
Thank you.
And now I'd like to move on to the common rental policy. I've drafted a rental policy for the common for your review. There are some areas that are incomplete, as you'll see, but I did have the basis of the policy for your review. I'd like to draw your attention to the third group presented in the reservation order of priority section of the policy. It is my suggestion that requests of this nature be considered and either approved or denied on a case-by-case basis by the commission. I would present these requests to the commission either on my own or with the requestee, and inform the requestee of the commission's decision. Do you have any questions for me on the order of the, on the policy?
My only question would be for Heather, but do we need a motion first, or?
Yeah, is there a way to make a motion?
A motion to approve.
Is there support?
Option N A.
Yeah, so you just put an option N A.
Just make sure the verbiage is correct here.
Can we just consider to just add something that I can just wall over?
See, I mean, we can have a co-discussion, because I want to discuss it. All right, well, yeah, let's go with that. I agree. I'm going to approve the common rental draft policy as presented. No, that's another one.
Yeah.
Sorry, I gotta think about how to make the motion.
We can have a motion to table it till the next meeting and discuss.
Okay, all right, that's perfect, yeah. I'll move to table the decision on the rental policy until our next meeting. Perfect, I want to discuss it.
Can we hear support?
Money will support.
Thank you.
Okay.
So if we have, under number three, political religious events, right? What legal position do we stand on if we deny one for, I'll just pick a random thing, like a, we don't want a satanic group coming in, like, or a discriminatory group that is not an inclusive group coming? I'm picking, like, the worst thing you can pick, but like, and we deny them, but we approve, say, you know, a different faith-based organization to have a common event. Is that perfectly acceptable because it doesn't impact the vibrancy and benefits of the community? Is that acceptable?
If you frame it from that direction, you need to be really careful. There's been lots of constitutional law cases, you know, lots of wood halos and appellate courts based on these exact questions. So it's not a clear answer, but in my opinion, we're safer trying to do, like you said, trying to keep more generic terms, making sure that we're talking about it's an inclusive group, or it's promoting the ideals of Buchanan, which we outline, not just, we have to make sure, is there something, you can't be constitutionally vague, that that will be challenged, if the verbiage that you used to disqualify someone is vague enough that you can be subjective with it. You need to try to make the terms for denial as objective as possible.
I'd like to make sure that we limit how open we are to litigation based on who we're turning down and who we're... So I think maybe if we could, maybe clean up some of that verbiage, and then we'll wall it over and make a decision at the next meeting.
Yeah, it's really only number three that concerns me.
This is the area I do need, that's why I'm turning it to the commission, because I do have interest groups, and I can see down the road that we could have other interest groups, and if we set the precedent now for how we treat all interest groups, I think we could make the way clearer for us in the future if some of these more challenging issues do present themselves.
All right. It actually might be, as much as I don't want to spend money with the attorney on it, have COGS review that portion of it, because I think we have some religious groups that are very inclusive to the community and stand behind what Buchanan's, we're not having services on the common, but they might want to post a bit that they sponsor that could fall into that thing, that concept that we want to get behind.
So I'd be happy, yeah, I'd be happy to try, in the interest of saving somebody, making an initial stab at a draft that's more along the lines of what you're indicating, something that recognizes that we're looking to, allow groups that are inclusive, aren't profane, vulgar, seeing things like that, that are constitutionally clear enough that we could include that, and then run that by COGS for their blessing, so to speak, rather than that crap that...
Yeah. That's all I can do.
While you're here, I want to say, I think you did a great job laying this out, and I appreciate you putting it in front of us. I think it's, you know, with the exception of that last thing, it still needs some tweaking. I think what you've got here is a great start.
Thank you. Would it be okay with the commission, if, in the interest of time, when we also bring up the revised policy, that I also present you with the requests I've received at our next meeting, or should I postpone those? Because I do have about ten to fifteen requests pending on the policy.
How times, I don't know, are we gonna be?
Do you? I'm afraid it'll sound stupid here, but that wouldn't be a first thing. Do we still have a common committee? And where do they, what role are they playing in helping to schedule this?
We have a common concert committee. They are involved with the concerts, and they would be in the Group One. The separate group that was doing mostly the Thursday concerts, that was called the Common Committee, has been absorbed into the Concert Committee because that's where their interests were. So we do have all these various interest groups that discuss their events at the common, and there's, in our calendar, and their dates are reserved. And I didn't think that was a special case that needed to be reviewed by the commission, but I am concerned about some of these private requests and non-city requests, and I want to make sure that the precedent is set as I, as my phone is ringing for the common.
Do you think, what do you think, kind of timing?
The ones are the earliest, if you recall, event that they're asking to have. Is it coming up recently?
Special interest group, I believe, June, but... Special interest group, I believe June, but they're planning now, so it's not, it's, we can wait, but if it, if it...
I would, I mean, I would personally, I don't want to speak for them, but I would feel better if we could nail this down first and take one thing at a time. That's just my opinion, but, any other?
Well, we have a table meeting, which you probably get it taken care of by the next meeting.
I mean, even if we hammer out, you know, your policy by the next meeting, and then, you know, the first meeting is eight to eleventh, right, in April? Is that too late to, to start approving your...
That should be fine. I'll, I'll inform the groups that, that we...
I mean, unless you think it's going to be a problem, which I, I'm happy, I mean...
We have some fundraising groups that are, you know, so it's, it's just, those things take a long time, like...
If Heather could probably kind of weigh in on some of it with you, since she's going to be drafting it legal to make sure it's in alignment with where her heads are at right now, so we're not wasting their time. I don't want to waste their time, that's the only thing, but being realistic, having Heather draft it with her schedule, and having COTS review, which, let's just be real here, most law firms aren't going to, just, they're going to take their time because they're professionals. It's going to be a month, probably, in reality.
I can inform the groups.
I mean, I think if we could wait till the first meeting in April to, to look at your list of who's looking to rent, at least then by then we'll have a better understanding of the policy that we're all comfortable with.
Understood.
And it doesn't get the cart for the horse.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ash.
All right, moving on to the treasurer's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Stephanie Powers, City Treasurer. You should have received the treasurer's report ending February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two of the bank balances and interest earned. I will also go over the approved expenditures of two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and three cents. The majority of the expenses are customary and usual for the city. We did have ninety-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and twenty-six cents came from the general fund. That did include twelve thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, which was a two-thousand-dollar progress payment to Krugel Lawton for the audit, and ten thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars was the final bill for the audit from Krugel Lawton. Twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents came from the downtown development fund. We had a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents from water and sewer maintenance and operations. A hundred-and-seventeen thousand, one-eighty, a hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents was the twenty-twenty oxidation ditch bond payment. We also had one thousand, three-hundred-and-one dollars and thirty cents from trust and agency this time. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Moving on to board appointments. Consider an appointment of John Shaver to Buchanan Tree Friends, who was recommended and approved by Buchanan Tree Friends on February night? I don't know. You have any, nothing to add?
Nothing to add, yeah.
He's on the Tree Friends now, isn't he?
I believe he's not attending the meetings, yeah, just not as a formal number.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move to appoint John Shaver to the Buchanan Tree Friends, recommended by the board.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Wheaton?
Yes.
Kerry?
Thank you. Now moving on to unfinished business. Item A, the second reading and consideration ordinance twenty-twenty-two point zero-two slash four-two-eight, ordinance for land development policy.
So this has already been approved at first reading, which means it's not authorized into law. Part of our legislative process is that the first reading gives public notice that ordinance is being considered to be approved and be codified into legislation as an ordinance that would have to be followed. In this case, now that we're at second reading, if it is passed at second reading, it is in fact after publication effective and would be considered with full force and effect of law as an ordinance in the city of Buchanan. We do have copies of this ordinance in its entirety on our city website, as well as up at that table in the binder. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions concerning? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I would move to approve the second reading of ordinance number two-zero-two-two dot zero-two slash four-two-eight to authorize the ordinance for land development to take effect after publication.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Wheaton?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kerry?
Thank you. Moving on to item B, the second reading and consideration of ordinance twenty-twenty-two point oh-two slash four-two-nine, food truck ordinance. Same thing?
Same, same thing, yep. So this one, again, has already been approved at first reading and approved tonight for second reading. After publication would become in full force and effect as an ordinance in the city of Buchanan. And also similarly, we have the full verbiage on our website and up at the table in the binder, and this one, for everyone's reference, does regulate food vending in its entirety, not just food trucks or carts, et cetera. Thank you.
And on this one, we don't have rates established at this time.
Not at this time. That will be established by a resolution.
Okay, are there questions concerning the food truck ordinance? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sean will make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance two-zero-two-two dot zero-two slash four-two-nine to authorize a food truck ordinance to take effect after publication.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Wheaton?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Kerry?
Thank you. Moving on to item C, the Varian County Trail Master Plan.
So I can share with the commission and the public, I've had conversation with Gary Wood, the Planning Commissioner for Varian County, who's also the lead for Friends of the Trails for Varian County. He's requesting, after the review that we had at last meeting of the materials provided, that the city commission and the city as a whole consider making a contribution towards the Friends of the Varian County Trails as payment for services rendered through their efforts to create a county-wide master plan for trails. Ultimately, that is something that all municipalities in Varian County have and will continue to benefit from. It's a valuable tool that we've utilized already as part of our application process for various grants, and will continue to use moving forward for other grants. I do find it to be a valuable service. For reference, there's been a total of thirty-one thousand cumulatively that's been contributed by other municipalities in Varian County up until this point. There's no recommended amount being requested. However, taking just sort of a straw poll of some of our neighboring municipalities, I found that a common amount donated, excuse me, not donated, contributed for payments for services rendered was two thousand dollars, with some giving five hundred, and some not giving any at this time, waiting and probably going to give something later, was the responses I received.
Anybody have any questions concerning? It's hard to make a motion and then have a discussion when you don't know the dollar amount to put in there, so I, I would ask that we just kind of, is everyone comfortable with a fifteen-hundred-dollar contribution from the city? Would you like to see a P? Less, more, none?
I think we're incredibly dedicated to the trail program and what the economic impact it brings to Buchanan long-term and regionally, so I'll move to approve the expenditure of fifteen-hundred dollars to be paid to the Friends of the Varian County Trails Group as a payment for services rendered towards the completion of the countywide trail master plan.
Thank you.
This was Money. I would support that.
I was going to support that.
Okay. I went to...
No, 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 Mr. Money, it's fine. I was going to make a joke afterwards that I'm thinking maybe we, since now we have the township as part of our parks board, that maybe we could challenge them to make a similar donation. But since we have a motion and we have a second, can we have a roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Wheaton?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Kerry?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Item A, first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-two point oh-three slash four-three-zero, IPMC adoption ordinance, property maintenance code.
So unlike the other ordinances that we discussed earlier, this one is only for first reading. Pardon my voice. So if it is in fact approved this evening, it's only approved at first reading, and that which means it will be placed on a subsequent agenda for consideration of second reading, after which if it passes the second reading, then it would become an actual ordinance. So if it's approved tonight, that does not mean it takes effect. And for those in attendance who may be wondering, IPMC is International Property Maintenance Code. We do have a building inspector, Guy Lewis, who would be utilizing the regulations set forth in this code. We would use it for regulation of housing in general, but also commercial structures, any type of building or structure within the community, and it's also a valuable resource for blight remediation and similar issues.
Thank you for the explanation. Are there any questions concerning?
I guess I have a question. Guy Lewis, he going to be in charge of this? Know what he's saying?
He's currently our building inspector, so he would be basically doing a lot of the inspections, at least preliminarily, if they announce that.
He's still basically part-time, right?
Correct, yep, up to thirty hours.
Is he going to have time to add this to his agenda?
At some point, we'll likely have to consider an expansion of that role or an additional individual to tackle that if we want to get more proactive in our blight remediation.
So that's based on however much we want, how much we want to put our foot on the gas depending on the amount of investment we need to, into that department.
Yeah, really, it'll ultimately be a policy decision for the commission that will probably come up in our budget discussions, which we'll likely be having sometime next month.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion on the first reading?
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance two-zero-two-two dot zero-three slash four-three-zero.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Can we, can we have a roll call, please?
Wheaton?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Kerry?
Thank you. Moving on to item B, USDA bond work contract for legal services.
So the projects that were mentioned earlier today by Brian Newhoff, when Mike Schwartz gave the presentation to the commission and the public, talking about the reconstruction of the downtown area, as well as the new water treatment and the new well. To pay for those projects, the city has gone and submitted two applications for bonding through the US Department of Agriculture. We have a tentative approval at this time, however, we need to go through the, as they mentioned, thirty-nine step, very comprehensive process of closing on those loan documents before the full bond issue can move forward. Naturally, that involves a lot of legal work, so bond counsel is required. We do have Roger Swetz as our current bond counsel, but the USDA requires a different legal counsel to serve as the review for the bond work from the city's perspective. So COTS Sangster, who currently serves as the city attorney, has been approved at the USDA level to serve in that role, and this is simply the contract in order for the city, if we approve it, to contract with COTS Sangster for them to serve and allow us to afford in this process.
Any questions? Comments? Would you like to make a motion?
This is Money. I would move to authorize City Manager Grace to sign the USDA bond work contract for legal services as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Dennison?
Yes.
Wheaton?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swen?
Yes.
Kerry?
Okay, we're going to move on to item C.
So I asked the city attorneys, I was trying to estimate when we would get to this section, and I told them eight PM is when they're supposed to arrive, so we're about a minute and thirty seconds early. So I don't know if we want, maybe take a recess and allow people to use the restroom, or what, totally, it's for Sean, you want to proceed?
Yeah, we can do that. Would anyone like to make a motion, take a, a recess?
I'm going to make a motion.
Is there support?
Support.
Everybody's favorite day after. Mr. Ryan, and I was, during your comments, I don't know why, but I was thinking while I was telling Walter Longdale that he wasn't going to use his age. His inexperience, right?
Well, the Preservation Society, they totally ignored it, and that's not a good thing to happen. I think, I think the, I really do believe that the Chamber of Commerce and them should be, they have, they have, they've cracked them. And I was president of the Chamber of Commerce back in nineteen-seventy-six. This is not a good thing for them to do. They ought to pay a little attention to the Preservation Society, and they have paid none. It doesn't pay to create hard feelings like that.
Understood.
Nobody spoke to me a bit about my application. I heard nothing. I knew nothing about it until what I saw was on the agenda.
I'll see if I can get some...
And nobody else in the Preservation Society was contacted. And yes, this is something that's sponsored by the...
Do you know if anyone else from the...
The National Preservation Organization.
Do you know if anyone else from the Preservation Society applied?
No, as a matter of fact, I only knew about it, about applying, because I got it from the Coffee Club site. And I, and it said, well, you had to have them in by the twenty-eighth. Well, I got mine in on the twenty-sixth. So I thought maybe they could at least interview me or something, but they didn't.
I don't know if they interviewed anyone, actually.
No. It's been badly handled. Any way you look at it, it's been badly handled. It doesn't make the city look good. I've been long, around here long enough to be able to observe that.
With the Buchanan Preservation Society?
Buchanan Preservation Society, and, and, we're a little miss.
I have spoken with Peter Leece numerous times, but...
My son-in-law, he never said anything about it. He never, it's very bad to not, to make something that involves historical preservation, not to talk to the people of the Preservation Society, and that's what you have done.
But we're planning a specific subcommittee that's all in storage for preservation. Would you be interested in serving on that, or having members?
Yeah, I would be. You don't have anybody on there that's in the Preservation Society.
We do have people that have historical backgrounds, but I...
What kind of historical background does they have?
Well, one of our members worked at a museum for ten years, and I don't remember the rest of her background. I believe she has... Well, one of our members worked at a museum for ten years, and I don't remember the rest of her background. I believe she has a degree in history. But I don't remember off the top of my head, I don't actually feel comfortable talking about her history. But we do wanna talk about history of Preservation Society, like the voice of the Preservation Society.
You have a question, mate. I don't have any idea you do. The people, I really have a board view.
Will you confirm with, with Peter, just check with him and make sure that he can reassure you that he, I've spoken to David, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna blame on his name, but there's another member that I spoke to. Because I don't want you to think that I don't care about it. And this is something that's very important to me, and I think you know. Well, I'm very involved with historical preservation, but maybe not always in Preservation Society.
Did you wanna go back up to your pad? I'm sorry, the chairs are so close together here.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to reconvene in the meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to reconvene?
I'll make said motion.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Everybody's favorite say aye?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna consider closed session.
So I'm going to go into closed session pursuant of M C L one five, two six eight, H and E to consider matters subject to attorney-client privilege, along with the consideration of potential purchase or lease of real property.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money. I would support.
Thank you. Can you roll call, please?
Swen?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
It is. I've taxed for twice. I'm good?
Good? Great to do a foot grease?
No, I'm not allowed to run. Poor John.
Is that your scar? Oh, that's an old scar. There's your fresh scar.
Nice.
I was gonna say, that healed up quick, but I'm looking at an old scar.
Yeah, that's an old one. That's, that's when I had my first surgery done. There's four other old notches around here, and they did, this has been opened up four different times.
Looks like they shaved your eyes, too. It's silky smooth.
I have to keep shaving this right, because it's so sensitive. Anything that touches it, it just crashes crazy.
Exposing that skin.
The nerves. So when they cut this open, they cut all the nerves, and the nerves are trying to go back together, so this, this little pocket right here. That is We have a pretty loyal ward. So much. Seven thirty in the morning, too.
You did it. You followed me. I thought we'd be like part of those subcommittees. I, I don't, I'm like, so that's what I was
I think that's what's gonna be perfect, is having all these different groups that, you know, you're not getting all of them. But when there's stuff that's relevant, not on every point, like, you know, not everybody's gonna be on everything, not every time, I'm sorry. I'm not gonna come to you with the logo and
Very concerned to know.
Anyway, she was trying to say.
Let's narrow it down. I wish I was on less stuff, too. I bet y'all do, too, get called on all the time.
See, guys, just throw on the hill squared away.
Oh, yeah. All done. We've got two donations, so what else do we
Hey, here we go. That's all you need.
They gave big.
Did they really?
They did. I was, I was really excited to see that. I wonder if they During the event, you know, they're right there. Yeah, right, and I mean, I'm glad they take advantage of that and that they're excited about it. I was, I was, I was really excited to see that. You know, they do their thing, and they go home, but, but I was excited to see that. And it just shows you, like, the different groups that are impacted by the event. So it's exciting. They sent one in, I'm trying to remember, there was another group that sent one in. We've got a lot of stuff going on. People are asking for donating sports, so March for Men, then the Commons, concerts. In the past, I've seen the budget from the past, and it's been, wow, generous donations, particularly, so I'm hoping we can match that. If we can, then we're good to go. No, but so far, so good. All right, I might have to head out.
There's an attorney back there.
You should be good. There's really nothing.
I don't have anything left. And I already ate dinner, but I'm climbing a mountain. I know. Maybe so much today. I'm still hungry now.
Yeah.
It's really good to pick up that whole bag. I did a U-turn for it, and they flirted the other day. Give us a variance print, they can deal with it. It's that because there was fudge on the car seat next to me, and I still wanted to come back for that.
I think that was the camera's point, you know, they tear That's the one he goes up with.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Daniel knew right away that I was pregnant because of how fast I ate. It's dangerous. Get out of my way if there's food in between us.
Hopefully, your husband's willing to drive for food.
Yeah, he handed me his foodie as I walked out the door today, so he's, he's on the money. He's got the memo.
I'm sorry.
Oh, did you see that? We just wanted to be sure before we post that you guys like to have a poll. Are you reading? Don't. If you're not reading our polls, don't, because the comment section is If you are, it's just like I wish I didn't have to I know, I know, I tried to talk to you about our Okay, well, if you have to share it, or Just let us know if you think I thought, no, you did.
Yeah, I told you, it's great. Thank you for the video.
Oh, good, good.
You guys wanna post it? That's, that's good stuff.
Okay, okay. We thought it was you. We thought, it's, it's The kids were throwing back.
You should have, yes, it was, that was when we had
It was terrible, especially when I hear someone
Turn about a dozen Yeah, whole time.
Said, no, there's a gasoline. You just need to fire it on.
The rose and parsnels over our gasoline. That's a whole new level.
Oh, man.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I am not back.
Wait a minute, I saw you over there today.
I've got so much to do, I can't not be there. Roof construction obviously has a lot of traffic, right? So that's I gotta sneak in, sneak out. Diane keeps coming over, truck passed up on my She told me, she's trying hard.
I told him, I'm sending you over.
I am not coming for you. You're right, you're not, but they work for you, not me.
It was so funny. I told him, you're gonna go over there. I'm like, come on.
She said, I'm sending Tim over here. Okay. It's complicated.
Because she's pre-fired today. She gets that way.
I love it. I love it. You get the side, you know, the side, just tore up right in front of your door. She had to be, she was just like, you do it on a Sunday, or they closed, or in the I was turning that over to you guys. I said, Pam, it's a bitch. It's cold for you. You have to be The part of digging it out, tearing out the pipes, replacing the pipes. I told you guys last year, I have done with that. Sorry to tell you. That ain't all that working. I'm sending Tim over here. I think you're gonna get one on red.
We'll get it, don't worry.
Well, I mean, we're involved, too. It's not like we're getting out of it for sure. Yeah, there's no, there's no
I don't know. It's not hard at all. He showed her, but
A schedule.
I don't, I don't
But someone still has to take minutes.
Yeah, you'll see Mary a lot, because we see a lot of meetings. Some passes Demo stuff that he thinks he wants, so I heard the, lots of fun stuff.
Yeah.
The video starts coming pretty good.
What happens to me doing Looks pretty good.
That's good. I'm, I'm ahead of the game. The, my therapist came, and I'm walking and doing what I can.
Good.
And gardening, I'm like, I can't walk away on plants.
You forgot your tennis balls, though, so I'm really upset.
Then I came in with my cane the next week, and she about died. And then that was it.
He's graduating, you know?
I just, I Well, I get rid of it. I haven't come in here anymore. She was about ready to pass out every time I came in. Yeah, no, it's, it's crazy. But, no, I, you know, I went to the doctor's office for my checkup, and I saw something. P H, P A, not their electric, but he was like, so we had to Like, I already did, but he says, no way there.
You don't know how good your life is.
Yeah, it's, everyone No, I tell you, it gets really restless, like, you sit here, I'm like, ready to get up, and I can't sit on the couch for very long. So this weather, Saturday weather, was chill. I was outside, slipped and fell.
Oh, no.
And I was in the middle of my driveway, so I couldn't call anything. I'm rolling around, and I'm like, oh, my house. My wife comes out of the barn, oh, did you fall down? Nope, just decided to take a nap.
Yeah, I'm laying here in the driveway, sleeping.
So, yeah, she, she came over picking up. I don't, I don't know, but they surveyed straight through very hard, and they went through
They're still in picks this year.
Yeah, they've been everywhere, actually. No, I got eleven of them coming on the twenty
I'm a challenge.
I sold eleven of them big, so I got, and then my daughters looking to get I got towels, I got everything, yeah.
When are you gonna bring me a baby goat?
I should do that maybe tomorrow.
Yes. Oh, my gosh, on Facebook, they have baby goats.
Oh, they are.
They're so cute.
I've got one, two, five of them running around.
They've been trying to get goats for a little while. We're, we're doing chickens this year as well. We're taking a fifty hundred head of chickens before.
Jeez.
Yeah, we're doing them in three groups of five, you know. We're trying to produce the chicken solely just for River State Hill. So, and then to see if we can be sustainable, and then hopefully the year after that, we'll take on some cattle and possibly some use, you know, we just wanna see what we can get done. Yeah. If we can, if in five years, we can be supporting ourselves in the restaurant, then we'll be super happy.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, we're trying. That's it, that's, that's the biggest part of the concept, is trying to feed ourselves. Getting in the farm business is not the best unless you have something like what we do.
Right.
And then doing it organic and spending the extra time and money that we do to put that forth in the practices that we do, it's kinda awesome to sell that product to ourselves. And we're taking on a mushroom garden as well, and we're doing some crazy things with greenhouses and geothermal heating.
Well, hey, if you want some duck eggs for cooking with, because I've heard duck eggs really make things, you let me
They're supposed to be good to bake with, yeah.
We're actually having a pre-picked dinner, a full moon feast, April twelfth, I think, or somewhere around there, and it's all about the eggs.
Thank you so much.
Full moon is the rebirth, the blooming of spring and whatnot. So we do a series of full moon dinners, and that's the next one, so I'm trying to create a cool menu based on eggs.
I got some duck eggs for you. Slap me home.
Did you come with ostrich eggs?
Those things are huge, and they need a hammer to break them. I've, I've had one and cooked one. It's pretty interesting.
That would make a huge omelette.
Yes, it sure would. It's a big four-ounce. One big frittata.
Well, that's pretty cool. That's a great idea.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna open up the farm this year for some more tours and more public tours, so people can come in and see actually what we're doing. We're trying to get with the school system and see if we can get some educational stuff going. We're working with the University of Michigan and a couple of other universities to see if we can get them in and help us to do some Just to get the education out there with brewing and fermentation and just growing and sustainability itself. So we have some pretty cool projects. And if it wasn't for Fran and Annie and all, then we, it wouldn't definitely have something to do with it at all.
Yeah, no, excellent. Yeah, I got, I got fourteen head of goat on my farm right now.
Pass baker
All of them are gonna be pasture days, and we're gonna move them from pasture to pasture each day. So it's gonna be an interesting, interesting team.
So we're working with the trackers now, and
So, we're working with the trackers now and then.
That's why you're interested.
We've purchased another property that's over there as well, off Camp Road, you know, so there's some facilities there that we'll use for breeding and whatnot, and take it down. And then, well, actually, that five acres will become our, where we do some mushroom cultivation and some other stuff, but we're doing strawberries as well this year, potentially, uh, pumpkins, so.
Yeah, big ones.
Hundred eighty-five, and growing, so if we can pick up more land, we will.
Yeah, awesome.
It's all, all of it's certified organic as well.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, it's an interesting process, the beer, the, the beer we produce is all certified organic as well, so, and then again, in five, in ten years, we would hope to have a full certified organic menu as well, but that's super difficult. So, that's, that's not relying on us, that's reliant on other purveyors being able to get us certain staples that we can't produce ourselves.
Sure.
So, if they can't do a certified organic, it'd be handy there, so.
Wow.
That's, we're working it, I'm, I've been dealing with Cisco as an important service, working with their.
Does he go on?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, nice, so we're working with them to see if we can get them to help us with the organics, just to make other restaurants, make it easier for other restaurants to get some organic products.
Yeah.
You know, we're just, not even necessarily just organic, but organic practices, you know, cause it costs a lot for, for farms to take on that responsibility, so as long as they follow the practices, we think it's a good, a good move, you know? And the USDA and everybody, they're starting to do other environmentally friendly certifications instead of doing more, uh, certified organic, cause it takes years to even get your land before you can even apply to be certified. You know, so you got at least three years between, uh, to, to get certified, and then you have two years of remediation after that to make sure before you can even get that, that anything certified. And if you bring in one thing wrong, one packet of seeds, they'll, they'll decertify a section of your, of your, your farm, they did it to us once, cause we got a wrong packet of seeds, you know, and, and then he picked it up, and it just happened to be the plot that he picked, and he goes, and it was just, it was flowers, it wasn't even part of the farm, it was just so we could look at it on the prominent. And he's like, this part can't be certified organic anymore, we're like, well, that's hard, we'll deal with that.
I was just saying, then you have to start the process all over again, right?
Yeah, 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 so, and it takes some time, but, uh, and they're pretty strict about it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're, we're, we're working on this work facility so we can start processing and ramping up, cause we do a six and a half acre garden now.
In the house?
The hops is six and a half acres, and by the end of next year, we should be doing something closer to ten, just in veggies and fruit and stuff for us.
Excellent.
Big, big trees.
That's a big garden.
It is a giant garden.
Holy cow.
That's a big garden.
And when they were talking about the trail, I was surprised that George Bohrman wasn't there. George who? Oh, I was mad. No. Gets you run into them every now and then. Then we can chatter one, good old ass. And we still haven't grown up for two kids. I believe it. And what he does.
That's one of my babies.
Oh.
She was, she was a single, a very big old.
Well, if she could get through the area, she would have a feast.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
What I would like, for a goat to take all this poison out of it.
Those are my twins.
Oh, really?
Yep, that's the only set of twins we had, normally we only have twins, and we had one set of twins and everything else is singles, so there's. Two more that I got.
Two more that are ready?
They already, one popped last weekend and one popped the weekend before, so, I've all done bird and goats this year, so.
But you look good.
What's that?
I said, you look good for just birds.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep.
I thought you were.
Especially with.
Yeah. Goat meat.
Bird, for sure.
I like goat cheese. I gotta get familiar with that. I was introduced when I moved down east.
Really?
I believe that's better cheese.
I've never had it.
I'll try it. It's, it's excellent.
And milk?
I've never had goat milk. Hey. We always got the cheese.
Get garbage cans out on the street. They're tearing down the VPW building tomorrow at eight o'clock.
Nice.
They're gonna start working on, coming down tomorrow morning.
Finally.
Yep.
I guess it's.
Well, it's not gonna take long, so, you know, just a one little hit, it's just all gonna.
They were asking, well, what do you think, I'm like, I, I, I wouldn't get close, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The people that complain all the time for it, walk the trails, do you know what you think about that building down there? I know quite a bit about it, and you better be nice to those guys, they take care of it.
You, you probably signed the docket to have that one built, didn't you?
Uh-huh.
When was it built, mate? Nineteen sixty-six.
Oh, no, I was graduating, I had other things up my mind.
Yeah. Heather sent me a really nice article about when it was built, I have it somewhere.
Well, really? It'd be interesting to see.
Yeah, it's, it's, tells you all about it, it was built for, I wanna say. Oh, it's sixty-some thousand dollars, sixty-five thousand dollars is what it cost to build that.
Yeah. And what's it costing for a new one?
Shoot.
Yeah, it's called inflation, man.
Yeah, and we're not even sure we're to the top of it yet.
Yeah.
Did it say who built it?
Um, I, I think it does say in there, I'll have to go back through my emails and see if I find it. She emailed me this late one Saturday night, and, and, uh, I was watching Dateline, of course, and I stopped watching Dateline and read the article.
Mulberg used to do a lot, and Wilcox used to do a lot back then, right?
Was that always the original building every day, add a two or four?
I like the blue times. It's a little, it's a little thicked, but.
Other one, yeah.
That's the timeframe.
Oh, I don't know, no.
Carl Henry Ferris might have dug the well.
I'm not sure.
See, I've been hanging around for a long time.
Yeah.
What'd you do at dawn? Did you buy a present? You did? You get receipts?
I know Peter bought it. At the library, yes, I bought her a present.
Well, I'm sure you did.
Those papers should be on. Do I ask?
Pole construction.
What'd you think of?
Pole. P-O-O-L-E.
You like it?
Yeah, it actually, that was a long time ago. Okay, tell me, huh, what did they bid for?
Uh, hang on, let me get to the other one here. Ninety, it was ninety-five thousand. Sixty-six, nineteen sixty-six. Kenneth Witt was the mayor. I don't mind the dark corn either.
Is Mary's.
I didn't even.
No, I'm just.
Smile up, please. You can stay.
Eighty by one hundred and sixty-six foot building. That's it?
No, I was concerned about you wanting.
Probably.
Oh.
Okay, do you still have the same file? It was in the original Belux.
No. I think it was gone before me.
Oh. Interesting, didn't it all pass up?
Yep.
Yes.
How long equipment lasted back then?
Yep.
Compared to today.
Oh, yeah, well, they built stuff to last back then. Now they're only gonna replace it.
So, it's down here.
Sixty-six, every two.
Yeah.
Front Street. They did terrible stuff.
There's still bricks under the front street. Believe me, I've chiseled through them, I think that's where it's water, at least.
Really?
Cool.
So, they're still under front street?
On that hill, going up, it's like, there's like, ten inches of asphalt and bricks, and you wanna talk about harms.
If some. Downtown, I'm sure, that's covered with asphalt, but the asphalt is.
I don't think there's any downtown, I mean, maybe there still is in downtown.
In, on a corner.
Maybe, yes, yep.
Wow.
There's still some on Main Street, I didn't know that, up there, past.
The Days, Days Avenue?
They stripped all that out in two thousand and three.
I've got some of that, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, do you?
Pole construction, oh. Route. Pole construction, not a Marion Springs building, sixty-six, for ninety-five thousand dollars.
It sounds delicious.
Yeah.
That's probably a great dinner, it sounds like the dinner I eat most of the time.
It sounds good.
It's so pretty, and I, I thought. But it had a really good, very color, but. For a long time, I have.
So, you still think of them there for projects?
Mm-hmm, I do.
There's, there's part of me that likes.
It's better than when they said August.
Or you can translate my French transition. Actually, I don't know much about it, but I mean, it was well natural.
My dinner's waiting for me.
It was.
Three is the pumpkin cheese.
It was pretty.
That's as good as my popcorn.
Yeah, we ate good.
Yeah, I'd like to stay, I hope those things might be out there forever.
Hey, Mike, can you, let's see what that's actually, what I'm reading.
I would love to, but I have no idea what it even is.
Yeah, I used to print.
I would tell you if I knew, but I don't know. I, I don't know anything until they come out of this, probably until she talks to you about it, but I don't.
It's not five zero one North River, is it?
Yeah, I don't know, Ralph, are, are you on the docket?
Another five years, maybe?
Yeah.
Going next to it. Along River Street.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, I've been, you already own quite a bit of property on River Street. Be nice to get somebody to move in there.
We do. I thought you just don't do parking lot.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, that's a big chunk of land.
Yes.
The parking lot on River Street. Be nice to get somebody in there.
Yes.
River Street, parking lot?
Wanting to do massage therapy to retail.
So, what, what, is there anything? Well, at one point, they talked about building City Hall, fire department, a bunch of stuff like that. Maybe there's still.
How can I know of?
We're almost to the township, and why don't you send them a clear out?
I can't let City Hall work as now, I like it being, I know it's probably a little small. Oh, God, that'd be terrible. That's way too small.
We did it for a long time, with the police, they said it called there.
We'd hire you back, we'd have you back there.
You'd what?
We'd hire you along the back.
Be nice to be.
Officer upstairs, Dick Best used to be, not Dick Best. Rick Best, used to be our bill inspector.
Oh.
Rick Bell.
Oh, Rick Bell? Oh.
Oh, my goodness.
He was building inspector.
I've never worn a lever, I don't know, remember a building. Building inspector?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I still know. Just, I just looked at the plan, though. Well, I didn't really. I had two pictures that I looked at. I can build that, my wife goes, oh, I don't know, I said, I can build that. Okay, she said, you think you can? Yeah, I can build that.
Dude, that was awesome.
So, is she only gonna go up one foot, you know, so it's not like it was a huge thing, trying to find some figures that I had. Yeah, that's, that was my weekend, that's what I did.
Yeah. Looks like it turned out nice, man. You look happy on that.
Oh, really? Yeah, sure. I love it.
Yeah.
My promise already, I haven't been trying to say. Pointing for my wife, you know, it worked out.
Yeah, her independence, man.
I don't know, they'll figure it out.
They're not gonna tell us anything.
I'm waiting. I'm waiting. I have the smallest strikeback. I've got two cars in here. This summer, like, when they plowed and my trucks in the right yard, like, I couldn't get out. Well, we have that lot. Yeah, there I'll do this parking brake to make it.
Dinner.
Here they come.
Probably about as soon as I get my car.
I'll text you. Okay, well, that's better.
Nobody here to what? Were you complaining?
I'm not going to.
Yeah.
Still can't understand.
How do you wanna go back to office, though, like, see everyone and like... I don't wear them out these chairs, but they're new.
Plastic one's been hard. It's a cool house. Uh-huh.
There was like a lot of meetings. Some people...
Oh, okay. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
The brackets, the brackets. I didn't... How did that not... Cause I just gave it a special...
Yeah, there's some good people through here. How long did you work at City Hall?
From eighty-six to ninety-four.
Oh, my goodness, long time.
I could not tell you one thing other than it said. Herb Russell was the clerk and I was typing and doing. That was cool. That was my favorite. I left it blue. I could not tell you if you had one year or whenever. Those are pretty ones. Yeah.
You said here, ninety-six? Eighty-six then?
Eighty-six to ninety-four. I didn't really like my blue. No. I always did different colors. Like, they were like... Eighty pattern. I got to work in a... The kids were using their school colors.
What did you do before that? Well, east.
Although we had, we had a lady coming and she wanted to... Didn't want to. Curly.
Forty-four. Glad you come on.
Like a gold forty-four. For Rizzo. US electric motors.
Are you Native American?
Swatted his number, quoted it to...
Which one?
He was like, will he not roll a hole? Over city for me. No, I wouldn't. They're gonna have a number for Danny. And mother with each bone.
Potawatomi?
But he would never... We have eight tribes in our nation. What do you wanna say? Pocahontas.
So it's Potawatomi Nation?
Yes.
And then what tribe?
Citizens, man. Pocahontas.
Okay, Pocahontas.
Shawnee, Pocahontas or... Duwanja.
Right.
We have Huron, just across Upper Peninsula.
Why that? I've been to a couple there, like, I don't know if you call it festival or whatever, but that's really amazing. It really is. A lot of culture. It's pretty cool.
And wait with this in the meetings, too.
Yeah. Take it off time?
Well, I'm not gonna wait anymore for it to come back.
We don't get anything.
You said what you had to say, huh?
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, well, they're gonna have a preservation group in the town, but nobody from the Preservation Society on their board. How they gonna do that? Bad.
Where is the meeting tomorrow night?
What?
Where is the meeting tomorrow night?
I don't know.
Is it down? Is it Preservation?
Oh, yeah.
Is it gonna be at Allen's?
I think it's gonna be Zoo.
Oh.
Um, and if I didn't give you the Zoo code, what's your...
My phone number?
What?
Do you have it on net at your house?
No.
Yeah.
I'll call Allen tomorrow.
Who? Excuse me?
I'll call Allen tomorrow.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, Allen. Well, no, Beth Murphy's the president. No, but nobody in the Preservation Society uh, do anything about this.
Oh, my.
About appointing the directors. I found out about it through the, um, the South County Coffee Club. Somebody, one of the women in the, in the South County Coffee Club found out about it. And I would, so I was able to apply. But...
If Bill Cameron's still...
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's on the board of...
I haven't been.
I just don't understand it. This is something comes out of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. This is a national preservation society, but they don't pay any attention to the one moment. So I don't, I don't know what's going on.
That's not surprising that they dump it every week.
Yeah, I know, yeah. And if they're not paying attention to the people they ought to, I'm gonna talk about it.
I wonder if Corbin knows anything about it.
What?
Corbin Deadkin. I wonder if he knows anything.
Um, I don't know. He hasn't been coming to meetings. He's not on the board anymore of the Preservation Society. So, I suppose he doesn't know about it. I only found about, found out about it through the, um, the website of the South County Coffee Club. So...
You don't get on the city website?
Oh, yeah, I do, but they didn't have anything on the city website.
It's been on the city website for a couple of months.
Well... They didn't, um, nobody, nobody on the board of the Preservation Society knew about it. So maybe we oughta, maybe, uh, pay, you know, uh, getting on the computer and this stuff is buried there. Well, fortunately, if somebody pulled my attention.
Right, right.
And I, then I applied.
Yeah, well, it's great. It's great.
But then they had a meeting where they picked the people.
Yes, they did.
And I wasn't notified of that.
Yes, sir.
So... It's all Chamber of Commerce and nothing in Preservation.
It is Chamber of Commerce, yes, sir.
Yeah, but it is a preservation organization.
Well, the Chamber meets the second Tuesday of every morning at seven thirty.
Second Tuesday of every morning.
Second Tuesday of every month, seven thirty in the morning.
Where, where do they meet?
They meet at, um, Randy Hendrickson's building.
Oh, in his office?
The Chamber office is up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The Chamber office is on the second floor and then the boardroom is right across the hallway.
I belong to the Chamber. They don't, I don't get notices in those meetings.
You don't, do you get newsletters? The Chamber newsletter? If you're a member, you should.
I, I don't. I, I do get stuff over the web. Uh, announcements with...
Right, that's what I'm talking about. It's an email, it's an email blast. It's a newsletter that comes out every two weeks.
Yeah, but I, 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 those don't make me aware of when the Chamber is having its meetings.
Uh, it, it does, sir, and it also had the Main Street program information on there. Ashley's put it on there every, every newsletter.
Well, why am I not getting a newsletter?
I can find out about that if you want.
Yeah.
You are, you are a member. I know that.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yes, I know that. I'm aware of that. I'll find out. Yep.
Yeah.
Every member gets a newsletter or should get a newsletter.
Oh, I don't get one.
Okay, I'll find out.
I mean, does it, you know, through the mail, a newsletter?
Email.
See, it comes in email, yeah.
It's an email.
There's a little blurb in the email that I get.
Okay.
But it, it doesn't say anything about the meetings. I, I don't get a newsletter on the email. But they have my email address. No, I don't get a full newsletter.
Okay, well, I'll find out why you're not getting that.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's very informative, not just about the Main Street program, but a lot of events that are going around in the city.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Originally, actually, too, so...
Yeah.
I'll make sure you get on that list.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Second Tuesday.
Yeah. So, second Tuesday, seven thirty?
Second Tuesday of every month at seven thirty.
In the morning?
Yes, sir, AM.
I will not be there.
Oh, come on.
If I'm up...
You're young.
I'll be at the gym.
Have they mentioned anything about Brown, Brownfield? Where the conference is at?
Yeah.
A lot of meetings. They used to do something.
I get, I get those emails sometimes. I don't know.
The Brownfield?
Well, yeah.
I, I don't know anything about that.
I hope they are. Unless, well, they dropped the ball with the Preservation Society.
Jesus.
Yes.
Well, we're gonna have our meeting.
I heard about it and looked it up.
I know Ashley sent it out. She does a great job on those newsletters.
Yeah, right.
I took everything out of Ross Sanders when I... Was cleaning out, so the police department would move. And took it over to Kevin's building. Took it upstairs where it was told to change with me and turned it on the floor.
Goodness.
For material from, um, Ross Sanders' house. Joyce now.
Did you get it all hashed out, Scott?
Uh...
No?
Are they wrapping up?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know how much longer they have.
Okay.
You piss him off that, Zeddy?
No, I didn't piss him off. It works another way. So...
In the preservation.
I'm gonna go.
Yeah. You gotta write old man?
Yeah, I'll give her a write.
Okay.
She writes in the back.
Well, you should let her write up front.
Like this, Norma?
So I won't get out.
You guys have a good day at all.
Let's see how they had.
I got caught on the street coming down here.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay.
I haven't met her officer. I waved.
Yeah.
When she came by. And, um, she slowed down. Could I help you?
Did she have blonde hair?
Yes.
Yeah, that's Amy.
Okay. And I said, "No, I'm just going to Lowry's." I didn't say, "I'm Norma and I walk in the street."
I'm glad you didn't.
Are you out?
Uh, I think so.
All right.
Don't think there's anything else, I hope.
All right.
All right.
Good luck.
Just to give you a shot, I'm gonna go. How was vacation?
Good. Too short. Too short.
Stayed a lot longer.
Where'd you go?
Okay. Went down there for a little bit.
Yeah, I guess in his suitcase, though, so I don't know. We should associate with him. Did you go to Disney World?
No.
No, or I just was curious.
No, then to the Disney World.
All right, good for you.
We went on the golf side for a little bit.
Oh, nice.
Went over to the central Florida area to see some friends.
Did you see the EFA tornado that kicked up on the beach yesterday that ripped through where all the people were standing?
Candy showed me a, a video of it. Yes, that was just south of where we were at, Fort Myers there.
That was like that and it was ripping through the people and tearing off everything?
At Fort Myers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right on the beach.
Came right off the, the water, right onto the beach.
Yes.
Was it a waterspout?
No, it was an EFA tornado.
Tornado that came off, yeah. Usually you think it'd be a waterspout, but no, this was a, like a tornado.
It just happened like bam, it was on the ground and ripping through the people.
Huh.
Crazy. They had some, they had some crazy weather down there when we left. They had a lot of storms coming through and, uh, yeah, it was, it was pretty severe.
Sure. Just hope they found a kind of, like, head.
Okay.
I was just looking at a job opening down there at Kid Coral. You're not leaving me. Have so much fun. I know, well, for some reason this year, I told my husband, I go, "We just moved to Florida." But I don't really, I do still think the Midwest is the best. But I got a little antsy there this winter and was like, "Maybe I'd need some warm weather."
You do. I love Florida.
And then it pops up, I, for some reason, I get all these odd job things for treasurers that just come to my email and it just said, "Kid Coral, Florida, opening."
In the summertime.
You should have gone last year.
I, I do not wanna do the summer in Florida. I'll be a snowbird. I mean, I'll go down there for the wintertime.
The snowbird's the best.
But I don't wanna do the summertime.
I would love to go and live in, like, Tennessee or Kentucky or...
Yeah.
Oh, that's, you get all the, it doesn't really get that bad in the winter.
And when it gets cold, it's not that bad.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
They get maybe a little bit of snow and ice, but that's about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it probably gets hot down there, too.
Oh, I can imagine. Yeah, but you can always go up in the mountains.
Yeah.
Catch some cool air somewhere.
Yeah.
That's true.
I've gone to Texas to be burnt and I come back with frostbite. It was warmer up here than it was down there. Doesn't that make you dad with that habit?
Well, you guys had like a seventy-degree, uh, day like last, not this Saturday, but the week before.
Yeah.
Everybody was talking about how warm it was up here. I'm like, great, I traveled all this and spent this kind of money to have the same weather you guys get.
It only lasted one day.
That's what I heard, so, yeah.
As a matter of fact, it got right back down and snowed.
Saturday was...
Acted like Indian spring. That's what my husband said, the very same thing, Nora.
I know Michigan, you have all four seasons in one day.
You do. Oh, yeah. I especially love that when you have, you have the heat in the morning and the air by the afternoon. That's probably my least favorite. I like that break in between the two. Give that bill a little rest. Give the unit a little break.
There you go.
Crummy, the pollen's gonna be coming out. Yeah. I'm on a mission this year. I'm not, I have, I must have a thousand lilies that my mom planted in what was her yard, which is now my yard. I have yet to see more than two. It's like the deer, you'll walk up there and you'll even see, the slobber will still be hanging on the...
That's, that's probably like candy to them.
I am, and I have yet, and I'm not doing, I got all kinds of tips. Spray the coyote urine, put down the dog poop. I'm like, how is that gonna let me... I'm like, how is that gonna let me walk around in my yard and look at flowers? It's not.
The deer love fresh flowers.
Oh, they just, they ate every, I must have had, I'm not kidding, a thousand blooms. I even said to my mom, I said, Mom, did you know the deer were gonna eat all these flowers every year? Stop!
I don't know how Eric kept the, I know it's so beautiful.
I don't think they did eat them when my mom was there, but they have started now. They have, the two years in a row, they eat every single one.
I think you should hide out there when they come and scare them off.
Well, but here's my uncle, where's that sofa rifle? Don't you, can't you just shoot through the screen? I'm telling you, if my husband or that uncle of mine puts a hole in that screen, it's gonna be.
She's not worried about anything else, just that screen.
No, I'm not shooting from the screen.
He'll be the last thing he does.
And I live in the neighborhood.
That's right. If he comes up missing, you know, I'm gonna go look at that screen, yell, yeah, I know.
You just shoot a hole, shoot a hole, put a little hole, shoot that. No! I will not. We're gonna figure it, oh, my neighbors think I'm, I'm out there, I'll see those deer out there in the night and I'll go out there and I'll go shoo! Really loud and they might, my neighbors probably think I'm crazy.
Boy, you must be.
And you'll hear them, they'll run.
Yeah, oh yeah, you must be really scary, cause they keep coming back.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's working.
But here's no way.
I tell you what, if you dress in camouflage and carry a gun or a bow with you, they won't come by you, I guarantee it.
Well, yeah, my neighbor.
Get you a scarecrow. Get you a scarecrow and put it up there. In camo with a gun or like, like Mike said, or a bow.
Maybe it's just me, maybe I'll come out there and set up my tent and see what happens.
Say like, well, hey.
Yeah. Just don't mess with the screens.
Right, yeah, I heard about a screen.
No poles in the screens. Don't touch the walls either.
Yeah, I know.
You can tell how long this one's been around, no smoking in this building.
Yep.
They probably all used to, I bet, back in the day.
Yes.
You know, there's even some, there are even some government buildings where they still got ashtrays. I don't think it's very many, but I've heard, I've heard stories of places where they still let them smoke and have their ashtrays right under dust.
Yes, when I was southeast, they.
Yeah, I'm surprised, but. Bet they had that back in the day here, too, huh, Nora?
Oh, boy.
What about these golf carts, Tim? A city of golf carts.
I know, so I'm going to do away with our squad carts and do golf cart mall. Some of the high-rise ones with big tires.
Is there a much, is there a difference, do you think, between golf carts on the road and dune buggies? Cause you know, that's always a thing where you gotta have it street legal or.
Yeah, that's kind of the same thing, only.
I wondered if that was, uh.
Yeah, but.
Well, my uncle tells me stories about the golf carts and how expensive they go at the auctions now and.
Oh, they're not cheap.
It's just crazy.
They're not cheap.
Oh, and they're gone, they've gone up since the pandemic.
Oh, yeah.
I, I went through the process with a ranger from my father-in-law to get it street legal and he had to put DOT rated tires on it. We had to buy new tires, man, put a DOT rated windshield and a, had to have a, a windshield wiper and. But you know, he can go a lot of places, I don't know that we need all that.
Right. Well, I mean, golf carts aren't usually street legal, or then what about the trails? Can they ride them on the trail?
Oh, my goodness, can you?
Cause you know, in Florida, they ride.
They, they do.
Golf carts a lot.
Yeah. And understand that there's different communities and some communities golf carts work.
Yeah.
Not every community will golf carts work. And, um, you know, we don't want people driving, cause we got some blind corners and last thing I wanna do is run over a walker or runner on the, on the trail, I don't think.
Where all the streets are loaded trucks and you got golf carts.
Yeah, but I'm gonna tell you, I was in Indianapolis and they have little scooters. And you literally ride the scooters right on the street, it says right on, you're not allowed to ride them on the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
And then you're talking a two-wheel. Anbar scooter.
Yeah.
I know the village of Stevensville, they passed where they can have golf, golf carts in the village. The waterway didn't do traction, but, uh, but the township was very, very against it. They would not deal with it.
Now, they ride those scooters on the sidewalks, it's not banned, Mike.
Those cars go, you know.
Yep.
Township's a different thing, I mean.
So can you imagine a golf cart? Cause the, the law reads that the golf cart can only go fifteen miles an hour.
Yeah.
You got, you got a fifteen mile an hour golf cart going down Front Street at three o'clock when Fabco, all those hundreds of people are getting out and they're trying to follow this golf cart as it goes down Front Street.
Now, see, I think we should prohibit them from going on Front and Red Bud, like.
But they can't go on Red Bud because that's a, um.
Truck road.
Yeah, well, it's not a truck road, but it's a state road, so, um, it's a, um, what is it called? A, um, a trunk, a, a state trunk highway or something like that. So they couldn't go on Red Bud because of the four lanes and everything, but, um. Front Street, yeah, I, I can't see, but, you know, you'd have to limit it to the neighborhoods and, and stuff like that, so. Because I just think, you gotta remember, you know, we get thousands of visitors to our town every day. Because of the businesses we have town, downtown. I mean, I can't, and I gotta, um, double check, but we did a, a survey and we gave it to Rich and I can't remember how many people we caught coming in just from, um, the east. And I mean, thousands of cars during the day. And, um.
Yeah.
So you got a slow-moving vehicle at that point, causing all kinds of congestion. Um, I, I don't think that our vocals and our visitors will be too friendly to them as they're driving fifteen miles an hour. They're gonna wanna go around them, they're, they're.
But at the same time, maybe it slows some of these people down.
It ain't going to.
Dude, I saw some, some guy the other day, I'll bet you he was doing fifty miles an hour down through town and I'm like, oh, Lord!
We catch them all the time.
Yeah, it's nuts.
Forty-five, fifty miles an hour, it's like, oh, I, I, I didn't know I was going that fast.
Really? Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That guy blew through the light right here, my wife and I were coming through town and my wife goes, holy cow, look at that, and it, it was wall to wall, bumper to bumper, and this guy is just, shoo! I'm like, holy cow!
Yeah, every street, I mean, we'll be out here on River Street.
Yeah.
And man, they get, they just. Out or coming in. I ain't got enough officers to sit in these places, you know?
Because of the light, Oak Street. All day, all night.
Mm-hmm.
Because they don't pay any attention to that light.
Yeah. So.
And I'd like Oak and Third to be a four-way stop.
Coming up that hill?
No, because people.
Well, Third's already a stop there.
Yes, but Oak also.
You want Oak as a stop?
Yes, because of the traffic. School buses slow down.
Mm-hmm.
People don't. They're gonna see how fast they can go on, um, Oak Street.
Mm-hmm. Hey, what'd you say about that fireman that ran into those two-part cars there, uh, last year? Right, right in front of your house.
I heard about that.
Did you hear it?
Uh, I, I heard it.
Yeah.
And then I saw all the cars out there and I, that's their business, let them do their thing, I don't need my nose out there.
I was waiting for Norman to call me, what's going on outside my house?
Yes, it's, I saw fire, I saw officers and I didn't see any smoke. But I thought, oh, one of these trucks that was from, um, house on the corner, they were doing their, what they call music, and it's nothing more than noise. They were, well, that's the city's responsibility to take care of cars on the street, is what the fellow told me. I said, no, it isn't.
Well, if it's after two-thirty, we can give them a little notice and let them know.
Not in the middle of the day when it's legal to park?
Right, we don't do that, but, uh, after two-thirty, they'll get a reminder.
Probably should pay attention to what you're doing, is all I'm saying.
It was about eleven.
Not be, you know, that law states that you're just asking for permission, you're not.
Oh, I almost did that.
I have not forgotten that.
Yeah.
Cheryl was up from Texas. And you were on vacation, that's what I was gonna hit you with.
What's that?
I've got a Texas car at my house.
Oh, yeah. I've been spotting it, I'd be like, hey, what's going on here? Yeah. I drive by your house, I keep an eye on you.
A lot of people do.
Mm-hmm.
The lady that was here, I was walking, um, down, I was going into Lowry's and she was, Norma, I haven't seen you for a while, I usually see you off walking.
Yeah.
And I won't use the sidewalks because they're maple trees.
You, uh.
A mess.
They're coming to do your road real soon, Norma. I don't get it. They told me it was supposed to be this week and then they backed out on me and said that they needed a couple more weeks to finish their job, but they're, they're moving here next, so.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, so they're, they're coming soon, I hope.
I did not know Phil was living that close to me.
Yeah.
I would have called him up and said, get up here and look at my truck.
Yeah, Phil lives right behind you there, the same block you live in.
He does pretty much live right behind you.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, he used to live in front of me, um, three oh one, that big house, the green house.
Mm-hmm.
He, that's where he used to live. And I saw his daughter and of course I didn't know, but she said, I'm Phil's daughter. Are you still living there? Yes.
Yeah.
Phil loved that house. What he took up for, I don't know. And I'm concerned about, they come through with the sewer stuff, they better talk to us. And let us know what's going on.
Mike's right here.
What do you wanna know, Norma?
When they're going to the sewer stuff? I know Oak Street's bad, I know we're gonna have to do a lot of work there.
Oh, you're talking about the, the downtown, the streetscape, that's?
No, we've known for a long time that our, our sewers were bad, that they're clay.
Oh, you're talking about when they do Oak Street?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, what, what do you, what do you wanna know? I didn't see the map tonight, I don't know what he's proposing. But they're, they're basically coming to, to, uh, Third Street is where they're going.
I heard him mention Oak Street.
To do the main trunk line. I think Oak Street is a.
They did St. Patrick's jogging today. Yeah, so everyone dressed up.
It's an old part of town.
Yeah.
You can't be there, you guys all, they all got down.
I can't remember, I can't remember the map there that.
Maybe I went to St. Patrick's, I'll make everyone dress up.
That it is, but.
Well, then I gotta tell Gorbats, don't you move.
Yeah.
I'm gonna need somebody that knows what they're doing.
Yep.
My goodness, I know.
Oh, damn it, I lost it now. So Phil lives at three thirteen Main. And your address is?
Three oh four.
Three oh four. So it's just a few houses from ya.
Yeah, it's just.
Don't throw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
His daughter said, on the corner of Fourth and Main, or I mean Red Bud, I went there, it used to belong to a lady that worked in the post office.
Oh.
Well, there's somebody else living there and she never heard of Gorbats.
Nope. He's the one, two, three, fourth house from the corner of Fourth and Main.
Okay.
On what would be the west side of the road.
Okay. Yes, that is getting closer to me.
Mm-hmm.
Boy, is he gonna be shocked when now I know where you're at.
I don't wanna get any calls on you, Norma.
Don't be surprised.
You're stalking them.
Okay, Buster Brown. I haven't seen you for a long time. His daughter says he's at the cemetery about every day in the summer.
Yeah.
I'll back another coffee.
Yeah, he comes out about every day.
I had iced coffee in the fridge, I don't know. He must have drank it all. I didn't sleep that good last night or something.
He's like Weaver, he'll never give up.
Who was that?
Phil.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I got laid out, I was like, oh, I can't breathe. My husband sat, slept asleep in that sled sitting up for a few days.
It's still holding up. He was more like. You're related to Ferris or Weaver?
I don't think I am, I know.
I'm related to Weaver.
Yeah, I don't think I am related to Weaver. Yeah, that's, it's amazing, but I don't think I am.
Carl Emery, Ferris was a well dropper. Probably.
Yeah.
Doug your well.
No, well, I don't know who dug my first well at my house, but I had one put in by McCarty's when I first went out there. Cause the old two-inch well went bad. But I don't know what that one.
Four hundred percent.
Well, the house I live in used to be owned by a Ferris. So, I mean, I guess there's that.
I'm cheesy, I'm trying to put back on my cheese, but I don't really do too much, that's not in the area.
Very related to you in some way.
More than likely a cousin.
So, yes, so how is Mike Ferris related to you?
I buy a coconut milk.
He, um, from, I, um.
Yeah, it is.
It kinda tastes. Maybe a nephew of my grandfather.
It makes me sick now that I don't.
Was Bob Ferris. And Mike is Bob's friend.
Yeah.
I could not eat ice cream anymore.
I worked for Mike a couple times.
It'll make my stomach so bad. Is it real ice cream or is that weird?
And he is still a harm with that favorite.
Mike is one of my favorite people out.
He is a good guy.
Yeah. It has to be like the, the, even the non-dairy, like at the store, I can't really do it, but. The Almond milk, the silk.
Yeah.
Silk or almond joint, they make.
He and Ronnie Lutz, Bob.
Yeah.
Who's a cousin.
Yeah.
Um, painter, do something. Now I guess he's got arthritis badly.
Mike has got bad arthritis, very bad, yeah.
I'll see if he can go deer hunting.
I don't think he's been deer hunting a couple of years. I think he went up north last year, but I don't think he's been deer hunting. Yeah. About that for walks and laps, man. This thing is like. I rode two miles on a bicycle earlier today.
We only have a half hour, okay.
Walked a couple laps around the track over there.
You're charming.
You're going to Red Bud Fitness?
Mm-hmm.
That's very nice.
Uh, my, the therapy that they do over there is fantastic.
Do you see Renee over there?[1728.32]
Yep.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
And what I learned, this cat, it doesn't cramp, but it tries. And when I went to the doctor, I said, I'd love to take a knife and just cut it and let it stretch. A rolling pin.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh.
That'll take care of it.
Been sitting in my house for how long?
Yeah.
I've got my rolling pin and I use it probably twice a day. This building.
They still have a cover?
Over here was so big.
They use it.
Yes, and I think they're outgrown.
Mm-hmm.
Just don't tell them you don't have enough employees.
Oh, yeah.
That's all they gotta do.
They feel it, I'll tell you that.
Yes. Well, I'm sure you do too in winter.
All the time, Norma.
And I know Tim does.
What's that?
Black employees.
Oh, I hear ya.
They want me to figure out if I can subcontract for the mowing and the town now.
Really?
I'm gonna tell you right now, if they're gonna give that contract away, I'll be bidding on that baby.
Yeah.
You guys have to do a lot of mowing?
Yeah.
Probably do a ton.
Yeah, we mow all the parks.
Oh, that type, all the, no, the, oh.
The ballpark.
Oh, that type, the, all the city parks.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All the downtown.
All the downtown around here, the duck pond, all the, yeah, you guys.
We've had a couple preliminary votes, hundred and fifty thousand.
For one year?
Yeah.
Sure.
Do you want one?
Sure.
Norma, is that chocolate?
No, it's either caramel candy or mint.
Yeah.
Do you want one, Steph, sure?
Yeah, if I go home from here and eat dinner, I won't be able to sleep.
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
Do we act like light?
Mm-hmm, not if I eat dinner, I'll be restless. And I can't sit on the couch, I'm telling you, I do nothing but squirm when I'm on the couch right now.
Go on, you walk your four laps around the block.
It's a beautiful evening, hopefully it's still nice out there when I'm done here.
It was nice out there. Is that supposed to cool down too much?
Have you caught one of these things that, thing on, put wood in loops and you can walk?
Uh-uh.
I've got one to let you have it, I got it when I had my shoulder done, because you can use it as a hand wipe too.
My mother and father will have it, little wheel sits on the ground. Yeah, my mother and father will have it. Norma, I can't sit on the couch and do that, are you kidding me? I have to go outside and walk.
Even put it on the mower.
Oh. I get too much stuff going on, I won't be able to concentrate.
Go out there and sit on the plow and.
Sure.
You can rest and still take you down the street.
Yeah.
You're riding one of those things?
Right there.
Oh my goodness, look at you go.
Yeah. That's what we need in downtown.
Can you imagine Norma busting down Third Street on those places?
I tried, someone was gonna buy a golf cart for me, when I was, um, in, uh, ninety-five and they weren't allowed.
Mm-hmm.
Plus I didn't have a license, but I could, um,
But you could drive.
Drive like, um, an old person well enough to.
We pass those golf carts, Norma's gonna be in one of them.
I'm getting one as my work truck, man. Me and you.
Yeah, I'm getting one decked out as a squad cart.
Yeah.
That'd be so cool.
Yeah.
That's what John's gonna drive. If we had more interconnected byways, you know, like what I'm saying, more, you know, it could work.
Yeah.
But we're probably not very connected that way.
No.
I don't know, you know, when you think about the towns that have those, they do have trails and the neighborhoods have stuff.
Yeah.
That lets it go through, yeah.
Certain cities are set up for that stuff and it just works a whole lot better.
That's one of Fabco's vehicles right there. Nice, a little electric pickup truck.
No kidding?
Yeah. Street legal.
Yeah.
Goes twenty-five or thirty-five miles an hour.
Now, I always see someone from Fabco.
Yeah.
On their golf cart, they'll hit the.
Oh, yeah.
Terracoo, go from one place to the other, so.
So I was picking up my daughter today at the high school, Tim, we're trying to straighten up that parking lot down there, Centennial Park. Because of the, we're shutting the road off to the dog park. So, sitting there waiting for my daughter, of course I got the windows down on my truck and I hear truck racing through the parking lot down there. So I called the high school and I said, listen, it's our parking lot, we're trying to straighten it up, we realize it's a mess, but you need to put out a thing over your P A that says, the next person that's caught down there, I will sign the ticket that says they are getting reckless driving.
Yeah.
So, I did make that phone call today.
Good.
I said, and, I'm gonna block it off, so you guys can't use it for any of your events, so. I think it's.
Hey, respect it, man.
Yeah.
You know, I'm serious.
I'm not saying I was the perfect kid, but I didn't tear up stuff like that.
Yeah.
Now, Farmer's Field, before it was planted, I'm all about it. Cause really you're not hurting anything, but.
Till you get to truck stuff.
I ramped mine out off the Mayflower Road one time, put the cap mops through the floor. Then I thought it was cool, me and my buddy coming up town, we were sitting that subway, truck was running. Jumped in reverse and headed across the parking lot, had to jump in the bed of the truck to catch it. I didn't know what was wrong with it, so I, the next day it was kinda cold outside, so I had to log start my truck before I went to school. Come back in the house and sitting there eating my breakfast, my dad goes, hey, what's your truck doing in the field across the street? I said, well, what do you mean? I lived out in the prairie, there was nothing, there was just the open fields and the bypass. I said, what do you mean daddy? He goes, it's going in reverse, in circles in the field across the street. I said, you're kidding me? No. So me and my brothers ran over and jumped in the bed and we went to the little window in the back.
Yeah.
That was a seventy-six Chevy. Yeah. That weekend we put cap mops on it. My dad said, what happened? I don't know. No, I, no idea, Dad. Yeah. I knew full well what had happened.
And when we have our cemetery, we'll walk, we can have those, um, I don't care who you are, golf carts running around the cemetery.
You can or can't?
Can't.
No.
And we have so many people here Memorial Day weekend for the cemetery.
Wow, that's coming up here pretty soon.
And get all this top beautification of Buchanan, oh, quit it.
Yeah.
You're not beautifying it, you're tearing up that one.
Progress. It's called progress.
I'm getting to the age where, uh, people above your neck, what's in there?
You know, Norma, they, they thought the same thing when Clarks came to town. You know? What's this little company gonna do for our town, make all these problems and look what it did.
Yes, it built Buchanan.
It did. That's why it was such a hit when I left, you know?
The eight o'clock whistle, the twelve o'clock whistle, or five o'clock whistle.
I've heard people talk of that before.
Yeah.
Could you hear it through the whole town?
Oh, well, we, I lived on River Street. Oh, you could hear it, you could hear the train when it went through too.
Yeah, oh, we still listen, I always listen for the ten, the ten P M train, it's, it's been running early lately. I used to take that train a lot back in the day.
Used to be a railroad depot up by the female rail.
Yeah, oh, I, you know, I had heard that before in Buchanan, huh? It's like a real depot where you can get on.
Get on a train, correct?
That doesn't stop now, does it?
No.
It's been a long time.
Very long time.
You've got Peters' ca- um, calendar down here. Of Buchanan.
Yeah, yeah, the.
Yes, look at those pictures.
Oh, I haven't looked ahead, so I'm really on march.
Well, it may not be in this one, it was, I think, last year.
Oh, alright. I don't know too much about Buchanan Town, Buchanan City, I've got, I've learned more of the most I've known since I've, in the last year. I can tell people very hard to be curious, I, I've heard a lot of very, very. My mom loved it here, she lived, well, she, we're from Niles, but she lived here for thirty years and she loved it. I still get sad when I drive around sometimes, cause she loved every street and every house and she just thought Buchanan was great. And it is, I love it too.
Yeah, it's a good little town.
It is a good little town, I like little town though, that's what I get scared of. I want little, I don't, I'm not a, I'm a backroads little town type of person. I left South Bend, I don't wanna go back.
Yeah.
It's a, I like that town.
Little town, but it, it's grown.
It's busy for a little town, yeah, it is.
And it's gonna continue to.
I just, well, I go, I'm voting for our tree huggers, I'm a tree hugger, I want all the trees to stay. I love the birds, I want us to keep the nature, I can't stand all the asphalt.
Yeah, you're not gonna change that stuff, that's all gonna stay, the neighborhoods are gonna.
River and the trees, I hope we still have a lot of character.
Oh, there're gonna be condos up on the river. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna have a, a marine division, I'm gonna have like one boat that goes back and forth. That fifteen foot of, uh, river front, you know?
Sweet scene.
So, yeah.
Yeah, putting them on the river.
Golly, we were walking through the truck show in Indianapolis and there was two cops, there was a, a black guy and a tall older white guy with a goatee. And I said, I'll be damned if it ain't Richard Wacott and Sweet Sea walking around. They were bicing the cops, they had their helmets on, I said, I'll be damned if it ain't those guys right there, I thought Clay and Nick were gonna piss their pants.
Yeah.
And you have to watch how you talk. Have you been here for a while? Well, recycling, good on to, um, Phelos.
Yeah.
Oh, I know where that's at.
Yeah.
Phelos, wow.
I've got the Smitty's memories and there's a book store.
Remember, there's movement.
We didn't forget you.
They thought they'd wait us out, but we beat them.
Got some troops sitting here.
We lost the crowd though.
Yeah, as to be expected. It's a lot shorter, right?
Oh, no, you're in for an airfall tonight. What the Florida, we better go to the same area.
Okay, now you're gonna say, does anybody give a motion for, um, us to go home? Go ahead, bang on that door.
Although we got two more pages to go through here.
Sean, make a motion to adjourn from closed session.
Excellent, is there support?
There's no support.
Hold on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so we are at. The. Did you wanna authorize, move to authorize the administration to take actions discussed in closed session? Does that work for you?
Yes, that'll be perfect.
Is there support?
All support.
Thank you, give me a roll call please.
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Carius?
Thank you. Now, my communications.
So I just wanted to share with the public of Norma, um, that the Oak Ridge Cemetery cleanup, um, remove all decorations by April first. Maintenance cleanup begins thereafter, April fourth through the fourteenth, um, and there's new rules that take effect April fifteenth. If you have a loved one interned at Veteran's Circle, please read the new rules and regulations that are available on the city website. So please let others know that you think, um, might be affected by that, Norma, thank you.
Thank you, okay, uh, let's, we'll comment for non-agenda items only. Norma, what do you got for us tonight?
You are free.
Ah, alright, excellent.
Have already been up there twice, so.
You're a good woman, Norma. Alright, city manager comes.
Um, seeing as I have very little voice, I'll just say thank you and, uh, we'll, we'll, I'll talk more next time.
Thank you, first of all, you? Most of your fun?
None.
Most of your day? Most of your money?
None.
Thank you for everybody just sticking around.
Good job.
There you go, that's it, thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna save my comments for the next time when actually people in chairs, so, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion?
Thank you, sport, thank you, roll call?
Dennison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Downey?
Yeah.
Money?
Yes.
Swann?
Yes.
Your adjourn?
And thank you for, uh, keeping the next court, appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely, not a problem, thank you guys.
Yes, thank you.
Garkey's gotta be getting a little worn out, she was here, I got here this morning.
But thank you, Commissioner, for staying.
For one, you'll be able to read it. Yep, number two, I'll be able to type it out. Yep.
Matt's beside that, he said A M writer.
Okay.
A M, send that off, show me.
I mean, basically involved.
Larry?